This time I will ask Secretary Felix to call the role of counsel, please.
Mr. Bob? Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Here.
Mr. Ricard?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Shultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix? Junior Counsel Cronister? Junior Counsel Day? We have a quorum.
For the record, just note that Counsel Rowland is telephoning in, so he's not throwing his voice. At this time, I will turn it over to our Solicitor. Solicitor Shultis?
Would you entertain a motion to approve the minutes for June 18, 2025?
Yes, sorry. Before I take it back, or I will take it back, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th.
So moved.
All in favor, aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Could you please clarify who moved and seconded?
And the second was Dr.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll give it to Solicitor Shultis.
Okay, thank you. As President Ricard mentioned, tonight is the night set for a decisional hearing on an application filed by Northridge Associates for conditional use approval of a hotel pursuant to Section 140-424 of the zoning ordinance. Notice of this decisional hearing was advertised in the Evening Sun on July 6 and July 13, 2025. Notices of the hearing were mailed to the applicant and to the neighboring property owners on July 7. The property was posted on July 7, 2025, and reposted on July 16, 2025. As a matter of some housekeeping, at the June 18 hearing, Dr. Rupp was not present. Everyone else was. My understanding from Dr. Rupp is that she has since reviewed the transcript and all of the relevant evidence that came in during the June 18 hearing and is prepared to vote on this matter. Is that correct, Dr. Rupp? Okay, thank you. So at this point, it is up to counsel. So, item four on the agenda is the actual decision, so I would request a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Well-
You want me to read that?
Yes, please read the motion.
Consideration of a motion to approve the application filed by Northridge Associates for conditional use approval for a hotel pursuant to Section 140-424 of the zoning ordinance of the Borough of Hanover, subject to conditions, and to adopt the written decision of the Borough Council related thereto.
I will second that motion.
I guess we're gonna ask Secretary Felix to call the role of the question.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
No.
Mr. Ricard?
Uh, no.
The vote passes with eight in favor of and two in opposition to the motion.
As the motion indicated, the decision, the approval, is subject to a number of conditions. I will tell you that counsel spent a tremendous amount of time crafting these conditions based upon all of the testimony and evidence that came into the hearing and mostly the public comment portion. So I will read the, all of the conditions. The, the actual decision will be publicly available after tomorrow, but I will read the conditions. The first condition is the applicant shall obtain all necessary and applicable state, local, federal permits and approvals for the proposed use. This includes but is not limited to a complete subdivision and land development plan, a stormwater management plan, all required environmental permits, and all necessary building and zoning permits. No construction or operation shall commence without these approvals. Two, all exterior lighting fixtures shall be designed and maintained in accordance with lighting standards set forth in Section 14507 of the ordinance and Section 320-41 of the Borough's subdivision and land development ordinance, and be otherwise designed to prevent light trespass onto adjacent properties. Furthermore, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM, all parking area lighting shall be reduced to a maximum of 50% of full intensity or adjusted to a level that maintains safety and security while minimizing light pollution and preventing light trespass, all as approved by the Borough Engineer. Three, no permanent exterior lighting shall be permitted at the rear of the proposed hotel building except for necessary fixtures strictly necessary to illuminate the required entrances, exits, and emergency egress paths. Such essential lighting shall be minimal in intensity, downward casting, and equipped with full cutoff shielding to prevent any light trespass onto adjacent properties. Four, the applicant must enter into a recordable ease, cross-easement agreement with the property owners of the adjacent hotels for road access to and from Wilson Avenue, cross-access from the adjacent hotels, and shared parking in a form acceptable to the borough. The cross-easement agreement must be executed and recorded prior to the issuance of any building permit. Five, the two road, the two road access points to Wilson Avenue shall be limited to left-only exits applicable to vehicles exiting the hotel onto Wilson Avenue. The applicant must place appropriate signage at both exit drives as approved by the Borough Engineer. Six, the applicant in the borough must enter into a revised agreement for exchange of real property in accordance with the testimony and evidence offered at the hearing and in a form acceptable to the borough and in accordance with the provisions of the Borough Code. Seven, the proposed 10-foot fire lane shall not be utilized for public access, parking, loading, or any other use other than emergency vehicles as intended. Signage, bollards, or other physical barriers shall be installed to enforce this restriction, subject to Borough approval. Eight, the outdoor pool facility shall be closed and vacated by 9:00 PM each night and shall not open before 8:00 AM each morning. Appropriate signage indicating the hours of operation shall be prominently displayed in, at the pool area. Additionally, the pool, as a permitted accessory use to the principal hotel use, shall be restricted to hotel guests only. Nine, the applicant shall install and maintain a continuous year-round opaque screening barrier along the entire southern and eastern boundary of the outdoor pool area. This barrier shall consist of either a dense evergreen hedge planted at a minimum height of six feet at installation and maintained to achieve a mature height of no less than eight feet, or architecturally compatible solid privacy fence constructed of durable materials with a minimum height of six feet. The chosen screening method shall provide full visual opacity year-round from adjacent properties. Ten, a continuous dense and year-round opaque screening buffer shall be established and maintained along the entire southern property line situated between the proposed 10-foot fire lane and the southern property boundary. This buffer shall consist of a combination of evergreen trees and shrubs planted at a density and an initial height sufficient to achieve full visual opacity from adjacent residential properties within two growing seasons. Eleven, all heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, generators, and other mechanical equipment, whether on the roof or at ground level, shall be completely screened from view from adjacent properties. Furthermore, said equipment shall be designed, installed, and maintained to ensure that noise levels attributable to their operation do not create a noise disturbance measured at the nearest residential property line. The applicant shall provide a noise study or manufacturer's specifications demonstrating compliance prior to final building permit issuance. Twelve, all loading, unloading, and delivery operations, including trash collection, shall be restricted to the hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM to minimize noise impacts on adjacent residences. The loading dock area shall be located and designed to mitigate noise, and any trash compactors or similar equipment shall be enclosed and sound attenuated. Thirteen, the use of the parking area shall be limited to guests and employee parking only. The parking area shall not be used for outdoor gatherings, recreational activities, et cetera. Fourteen, the applicant is bound to all of the testimony and evidence offered at the hearing and the above findings of fact. Fifteen, the applicant must comply with all local, state, federal laws, regulations, ordinances applicable to the applicant's use of the property. And finally, sixteen, the aforementioned conditions shall automatically become conditions of any related zoning permit issued pursuant thereto, and any failure to comply with said conditions shall be a violation of the ordinance.
Thank you, Solicitor Shultis. At this time, I request a motion to adjourn the hearing. Second, all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you. Point of order, we will be rolling into the July council meeting and give you about five minutes to resituate things. Okay? Thank you. I request that we all initially stand and recite our amazing pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that with a moment of silence. At this time, it is my pleasure to call the July 2025 meeting of your Hanover Borough Council to order. I request that we all initially stand and recite our amazing pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Having some technical issues on our end. But now I think we're ready to call the roll. Secretary Felix, if you would, please.
Mr. Bob? Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
No, here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Here.
Mr. Ricard?
Uh, present.
Mr. Rowland? Scott, do we have you?
Marcus Scott on? Let us know when he joins, will you please?
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Shultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix? Junior Counsel Noah Cronister? Alexis Day?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Those following along, there was no executive session, so we will move into item three, that being the preliminary or first public comment portion of the meeting. And I have Mr. Robert Holt to come for, forward first to address counsel. Mr. Holt?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Robert Holt, from the Third Ward. The neglected, unprotected, Third Ward, rejected, dumped-on Third Ward. I want to make sure to emphasize that you should have a thorough discussion about the parameters of the financing for the public service building that you're gonna vote on tonight, and I would hope that there's a robust discussion about that because it sounds like there's not only gonna be a tax increase for 2026, there's probably gonna be a tax increase for 2027 as well because you're a little bit of a wedge here with this building project. And the building came in overbid, way overbid, what you expected, and you don't have enough money. And so, that's gonna equate to a tax increase. And, I don't know, I'm, I'm interested to hear what that is. And I'm looking here, and I think you ought to take the miscellaneous increases of fees off the consent agenda and have a real discussion and maybe go back and revisit the market house rates and raise the market rates, house rates higher to ensure the taxpayers are not subsidizing businesses that are not even local businesses. And you talk about a farmer's market, it doesn't sell much in the way of produce and things like that. It sells a lot of stuff and has restaurants that serve things that, I don't know. I just think that given the fact that we're facing tax increases and the fee, the amount of fees that you want to raise the market rates are nominal, and compared to what's happening to our taxes just this year alone, in comparison, comparatively, they're, they're getting way cheap, $50, $35, I mean, for a year. And I just think you ought to be realistic and you ought to be looking out for the citizens of this town instead of not wanting to hurt business. But, as councilwoman is, Rupp has said many times, you know, we can just raise taxes. There we go, you know? And I just don't know, just find it incredible. And you continue to do things that, as far as spending, defy pragmatic finance. And, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Sandy Mao.
Sandy Mao, general delivery. My questions pertain to the facility room rental fees as well as the recreation fees. Under the Guthrie Memorial Library, you have listed a program room, a boardroom, and a study room. They no longer exist. So I don't know why they're even listed on the report. Then, under the recreation, let's start with the tournaments first. Is that fee, that $660 fee, the same for a one-day tournament, a two-day tournament, or a three-day tournament? Because if that's the case, you have a one-day tournament as a result of some of these bad weather conditions, then it would be more prudent for the teams to pay $50 hourly fee than the $660 tournament fee. Do you want to save the bond questions until it comes up?
There's only two, it's not question and answer, there's only two comment periods, as you know. You're only here for the first one.
Well, I'll raise my concerns then. It's not uncommon these days to have an entire issue being purchased by, in this case, M&amp;T Bank. Mutual funds are quite large these days, and it's very hard to find good paper. The concern I have is that they are also going to be operating the sinking fund. So I'm wondering if they are also the registrar and also the transfer agent. The rate, given that the tenure was at a 4.382 today, 3.94 on Series A is pretty good. However, when I go to Series B, we go from 3.72 to 8%. I don't understand that at all. That's an incredible leap, and I've not seen that happen before. So I think you should address those concerns as well. Thank you.
Okay, community media, is there anyone online? I'll open it up for that level of participation. Currently, no one. I will then close that public comment portion of the meeting. We will move into agenda item four, that being presentation. The first is me, and I'm gonna ask for Matt Perkins and Curtis Oviot to come forward.
The proclamation is for National Farmers Market Week, August 3 through 9, 2025. Whereas local farmers provide our citizens with access to healthy, locally and reasonably produced foods through farmers markets, particularly at our own historic Hanover Market House. And whereas farmers markets serve as vital anchors in communities across America, positively impacting public health and supporting local economic vitality, strengthening regional economies, supporting local food businesses, increasing access to fresh nutritious foods, and fostering social connections, and whereas one of the first acts of the original Borough Council was to assume the responsibility of developing a market house to serve the Hanover community with the original market house occupying a prominent location in the square from 1815 to 1872, and for a time on the lower level of the Hanover Opera House. I'm gonna go off script here a little bit, and we're all gonna sing, if you're ready. Okay, we'll come back on script. Until its move in 1933 to the current location at 210 East Chestnut Street, where it continues to be a cornerstone of our community, offering residents fresh local produce and mercantile goods from its convenient downtown location, and whereas the United States Department of Agriculture, in collaborations with Farmers Market Coalition, has designated the first week of August each year as National Farmers Market Week to recognize the significant contributions of farmers, markets, to the health and well-being of communities across the nation. Now, therefore, by the authority vested in me, I, William W. Ricard II, Hanover Borough Council President, Hanover Borough, York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the week of August 3 through 9, 2025, as Farmers Market Week in the Borough of Hanover. In proud observance of National Farmers Market Week, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate, support, and patronize the Hanover Market House and its dedicated vendors. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay up just long enough to introduce. Mayor Whitman is gonna come forward for the Fraternal Order of Eagles with Chief Martin. Do we have a Chief Martin? And Counsel Fuentes?
Yes, sir.
Part of those two.
So, the police department has what are called radar speed signs, and generally, they, they set them out and they collect various types of data, which helps to do different, particularly different traffic studies.